It's four o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have the meetings minutes from the last meeting in front of us, so I hear a motion.
Name's a motion.
A meeting in the minutes. Got a motion, got a second, all in favor say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move right on into old business. We have the old business that we need to finish before we start on our new business. Anybody think of anything? Lady?
No.
Okay. We'll go right on into our new business, and right now we'll turn it over to a lady. I go ahead and get it going.
Okay. Well, the first on the first agenda this evening, we appreciate everybody coming out and taking time to do that, is concerning closing portions of the end of Stubblefield Road. So, kind of you got an obvious, we asked anybody about a hearing, and let everybody here that wants to speak on that situation, that's the reason you're here, I'm sure. So, Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna start it, who would like to speak?
How many people would like to speak on the subject right now? If you raise your hand. Would you like to speak first?
Alright. I'm here to address the closing because I have a son buried in the cemetery.
Would you state your name?
I'm Joanna Wade. I'm a resident of Warren County, I'm an entire teacher here. He was buried there seven years ago with the expectation that the rest of us as family members would be buried with him. At that time, Joey Caton, Joseph Caton Jr. owned the property, and we, my children had grown up with the Catons children, and it was, just seemed like a good fit. My son was 37 years old at the time, or 35, excuse me. The reason that I'm asking that it not be closed is that I have no way to get in. Once the road is closed off, and there is nobody keeping the road up, I can't get in to visit the site of my son's grave, or to care for it. Now, I don't care for the majority of the cemetery, I'll leave that for Mrs. Caton to address, but I'm sure she could not get equipment in there to keep it clean and neat. So, I'm asking that we have access to a place that means a lot to me as a mother, to be able to go and place flowers on my son's grave.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment.
Ms. Caton, would you like to speak?
Yeah. First of all, as you know, my husband died very suddenly in 2008, and we'd have owned that farm quite a while, and Joey's got it, and at the time that he died, Joey had it. And so, it's, we didn't know where to bury Joe. He said, "Just put me out in the field." I don't mean to have anything fancy, he didn't want to be buried where his mom and dad were, and all my relatives, all my other families out west, and so I just didn't, I was no frame of mind to be able to make some kind of decision. And so, we went around, as you know, when somebody dies sudden, you don't have time to do anything, and you're not in any frame of mind to do anything, and all my siblings, all my kids, decided that's where they wanted to bury Joe, because Joe had worked a lot out there on the farm. And so, that was just fine with me. And there's some people, I would, it's an old cemetery, I think the last person that was buried out there was buried in 1966. And there's seven slave graves, they're like this, so they, the ladies, the family that comes from Chattanooga, they said they were slave graves. Then they showed me a plaque that had been deeded, and it's registered in Warren County as a legal cemetery. And so, anyway, and then there's three other old tombstones that are there, and you can still see Minerva's, Stan Bloodfield's writing on her tombstone, uh, the stone. And so, like I said, there's only one other family that I know of, there's three of them that come, probably every year around Easter that they come. And other than that, nobody visits it but me and Joanna, and of course, my family. And while we owned it, I can understand why you want to close it, I would've wanted to close it too. I can understand, it's only dead end street, and Jason has been very good to provide a good road to where I can bring my equipment up there and mow the yard, my boys take turns with me, and can turn around, and you've been very good about that. The thing that got me the most, I guess, is when I went up there, and one, I had fenced it off so the cattle couldn't get in, and one side of the fence line had been taken down, I thought, why? And two of the trees. And I thought, and then my son said, well, I guess she mentioned it to Brian, and he said, "You need the elevation or something for the pivot store." But I thought it'd be put back, and about a month, I don't know that how much later, but it must've been about a month later, I went out there and everything, all fencing was down all the way around, and I had no clue, I just went back and it involved. Sorry. Anyway, I wonder, I went to Lisa, whatever her last name is, the district attorney, and I thought, I wonder what legal things I can deal with this, how to deal with it. And I didn't talk to her, but I talked to her assistant that was in there, and he said that it was a felony five to damage any cemetery or anything, or bother any of the graves, tombstones. And it's a year in prison or up to $5,000. Well, I didn't go through charges, and I haven't. But then, I knew that the road is open at the time, and so, you know, it come to a point where we got to do something. And anyway, I, I don't know what the solution is. I think that if you do decide to close it, I checked with the funeral home, and they said it cost $2,000 to dig up a grave. And Joanna said that if I move Joe, my husband, and she will move Jonathan. And so, I didn't know, I don't, I was raised respecting graveyards and tombstones and things like that, but I also know that, like Jason, I would've liked to have closed it off too. So, you know, I can understand your position, but I can also, and if that's what he wants us to do, we'd just like some help with the expenses. And so, but, you know, I feel sorry for people that's coming from, maybe you have family or relatives there, I don't know. I, for people I've known that have come, it's the family from Chattanooga. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Would you state your name now?
Emily Fitch Kelly. And my sisters and brother are here also. And so, are you Jason?
I'm Jason.
Okay, I've never met you.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons I want to come, is to meet you.
Sure.
I appreciate that. So, as y'all know, Mom and Dad, Joanna and Fitch bought their farm right across from where Jason is several decades ago, 40 years, and so, Dad's been gone a long time, and Mom's passed, and so now, it has become ours. And so, my sisters and I own the park that's up next to Stubblefield Road. So, we had, when we learned about this, we had concerns, and we had, we had three concerns, kind of one falls off the other one, but one was the cemetery. And there, on the internet, you can find, FindTheGrave.com, you can find who's buried out there at this cemetery, and it just, I mean, it's a currently used cemetery, so it's not like it's been vacated or anything. And I mean, there, these are old names back there, so if y'all want to, the names are listed on the second page. And so, our family, Mom and Dad and I are buried at Mount Sinai, and that's where we're all being buried, but, you know, we would want access to our family cemetery. So, the other question that we had was, who owns the property? And so, the tax successor doesn't list it as Jason, it lists it as Michael Hollinshead. And so, but I think you're...
I own it too, it's just, he's the first name.
He's the primary.
The primary, and it says, "Amen."
Right.
Michael Jason and then everybody else.
And so, you know how it is, when you look at the internet, you find everything, and some are straight, and some are not, but apparently, Michael Hollinshead, am I saying it right?
Yeah.
Hollinshead is Smyrna ready mix.
Correct.
And so, they've got 16 to 30 ready mix places all around, and on their website, I mean, it's been a very successful business. One place they don't have it is Warren County. And so, they have it in Coffee County, Cannon County, I mean, there, there are any number, and they're looking to expand, and we're concerned that, you know, you won't always want to use it as agriculture, that you'll...
I hope so, I don't want to come for it.
Okay, well, we don't either. So, but, you know, that was why, when we saw the Hollinshead name, I mean, the Hollinshead started almost 20 years ago in Smyrna, and from nothing, and have built this multi-state business, but it's all ready mix, and we don't want the trucks, the dust, the traffic, all of that out there. And we're concerned about the creek out there as well, so there's a little creek, Hickory Creek, that goes out there.
Why would that happen?
The creek? Well, if it turns into a ready mix operation...
Oh, I see.
You know, there's potential to flood the creek. I mean, there is the agriculture also, I mean, you know, but that's, you know, it's more with that. So, and that creek goes on, comes through, through our property. So, those were our concerns, was that decisions weren't necessarily up to you, Jason, that there was somebody that's, I want to say, big business, you know, that might want to do something different with the property. Is that it?
Gary, my only concern, the only reason I came to the meeting, was I got noticed, you know, for a while. But, and I understand these folks' concern, I really do. I just had a funeral service today for my, my first cousin, and at any rate, I do understand about the death and about, about that being a very emotional thing, I understand that more than most people. My concern was about, we sometimes take semis down Stubblefield Road, and when we get, there's no place to turn around in Stubblefield. And the only place that we have that's safe to turn around is to pull in on Baker Road and jackknock the trailer into Stubblefield Road. And I understand that that's not concerning this, this part of the, this proposed closure. That's the only reason I came, and I think I talked, I spoke with Lady about this earlier. And addressing these folks, and whether or not the committee decides to close the road or not, I imagine that it's within the purview of the county to grant people a permanent easement for egress and agress to the cemetery, of course. I mean, I would think that that would be within the purview of the county to do that.
There's no way that a cemetery road could ever be blocked off. If, if they were gate put up, it would have, each member, family member would have to have a key to it.
Right.
I've been in situations like this before.
Right.
You know, and you cannot shut a cemetery road down.
Now, my father once owned a farm that, you remember Richard McGrady, that got killed a while back, over several years ago? The farm that got a shady rez, that my father owned that farm, and there's a McCollum Cemetery owned farm. And folks would come down once a year, clean off the cemetery, and we would just, I mean, farm, we never, we never even thought about trying to block it. I mean, that was not in, we, as a matter of fact, we tried to make the road good enough so they could get in there.
Does anyone else have anything to say?
I'm about to ask, I'm Ellen Fitch Wells, and I own the property there. What would, I guess, why, why would you want, want to close it off?
Well, I was gonna get up and speak after I got done, or whatever, you know.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Hey, I'm chasing Wells, and I can understand everybody's desire. I don't keep nobody from the cemetery, I mean, that'd be the last thing that's on my mind, even though I can think about it. I'm just trying to keep people from going up our parking at night, going out beer cans, and I have equipment setting up our trailers, and, you know, you're gonna lock stuff up so much, you know? And that's my only thing, really, I just wanted to, you know, cut it off down there, put some gates up, with just a chain around it with a hook, I thought I told Brian, you know, if I ever did put a lock on it, I don't want everybody to know it's called an action, have a key, have access to it, probably eight or nine, 10 times a time, if you come over during the daytime, it's gonna be open anyhow, because I'm up there on the porch. But like I said, you know, I'm not trying to block nobody from the cemetery. And I don't know if everybody has really looked at the plan, but that, that road ends up her curb, it don't even go around up her tour, there are houses out there. You know, my question's been too, who really owns the cemetery? Who has, you know, our property or we do, but who, who regulates it? You know, who, who can say more people can be buried around here? I don't know. You know, I don't know. I mean, how, you know, how do you, how do you regulate something like that? I mean, you know, I don't know if, you know, if it's fire, or everybody come up and, "He buried," you know, you know, the same.
Does the cemetery have a name?
It's registered in the Warren County Cemetery.
Do you have a copy of that, of what it, how big it is and everything?
I, the people in Chattanooga have it, but there was the result, people that were buried up there, they had registered it with a cemetery, the length and the speed of tomb to that.
One last thing about, I can't stand, I'm sorry, I just had surgery on my knee, and that's why I'm so, and I don't know where the proposal is to close the road. And I understand about the gate and access, my biggest concern was, wherever you close that road, there's still more road going into the area we need to go to. Nobody will be responsible for the upkeep. When it gets really bad, how do we access the cemetery? That's, that's my concern.
That would be, Lady, how far past the end of the pavement does the county road actually go up through there?
Well, according to our road list, it went to the curb and by our left went up there, which, I know he had a survey, but according to our records, it went about 100 feet, 150 feet further up to the old heights. And that's what we've always maintained, and that's what was in here when I, when I came here, my father came here, and according to our road list, which, that's about 150 foot lower.
And how far back are we wanting to block it off?
We're wanting to block it all the way back to Jason's driveway, about there, 388, before you cross the little creek, the little branch. There'll be some survey pins there, some posts, and that way, people's got a turnaround, which Jason offered to do that, you know.
Well, and see, that part will deteriorate. It will deteriorate with no one caring for it. If it's, that's not a county road, I'm su, I don't know this man personally, but I'm sure he doesn't want the responsibility of that section of the road up.
Well, I already been taking a kick at it, the last, you know, back, I guess 50 years ago, it got pretty rough, and I fixed it, but I mean, I don't have no, I don't have no...
Yeah, there's been going on a while, and we've been discussing, and I haven't done much to it in a while. I'll get to that, because we was talking about taking it off the road list, then, I mean, off the county list, and sometimes it's on being a problem, and but here, a little while back, when we got some phone calls from these interested people here about the cemetery, said, "Did you know one was back?" I said, "Nobody's ever mentioned it to me." I had no idea, you know, I was in the dark about it, and I said, you know, "I understand your concerns." And, you know, as a citizen, I don't want to do anything to cause anybody problems about cemetery, you know, so, that's very important. You know, I lost my father not long ago, and I don't want to do nothing, cause nobody no harm on the cemetery. Okay? And I'm glad y'all came, and I'm sure the Halloween breed is glad too.
I've seen situations like this where people had asked for the road to be closed, and there, there was no, anybody against, against it, and so the highway department, not, not y'all, but in the past, would go ahead and close the road. And then later on, some of the family members would want to build a house on it, and so they would go down through there 100 feet, pass the road that'd been closed, and build a house, and maybe another sibling would go down below them and build another house, and the next thing you know, you got 300 or 400 feet of really just a driveway that school buses has to go down and pick kids up and turn around, and you can't get the road back on them out, because the road, after it's closed, if it ever was to be opened back again, it has to be brought back up to Levy's Code stuff, which is, has to be wet, widened, ditches have to be pulled on each side. I mean, once this road was to be closed, if we decide to close the road, it actually won't be up to this committee, it'll have to go before the full court. After the road was to be closed, it'll never be opened back up again. I mean, if you was to decide to sell the land or whatever, you would never be able to get that road back opened up again. I mean, so it's, actually, it's not up to us, all we can do is, is voice our opinions, and we can decide to take it before the full court, either way, yes or no. But I personally think the road should be left open, personally, knowing what I know and situations that's happened in the past, personally, that's my personal opinion. Would anyone else like to state theirs?
My opinion is, is I'm trustee of the Smyrna Cemetery. Of course, we have a nice cemetery, and we take care of it. I'd hate to know that we blocked from anybody going to see family, 'cause I'm, I live next to it, and there's traffic in and out there just about on a daily basis. And if these ladies, or their families, or whomever, wants to go to that cemetery, then they need to have a, a good access. I'm not saying a paved road, but they ought to have a maintained road, and I'm not saying you wouldn't keep it up, alright? And I don't know you, but I'm not saying you wouldn't keep it up. But I'm just afraid, I'm like Gary, I'm afraid if we shut it, you know, I just, I think it's the wrong way, I think we need to leave it where these families and future families can go. I am the, I am a little bit concerned, as when a cemetery is formed, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but is there not trustees or somebody that's been pushed down? I know I'm a trustee at the cemetery that, after, that, you know, has some way of looking after it to say how big it is, or who can be buried there, and do you charge to be buried there, and that kind of thing? So, I guess a suggestion to me is, is probably whoever is buried there, you ought to contact them, you ought to form some kind of, for that reason, to figure out exactly how much land do you have, is, you know?
Right.
Do you have a half acre, do you have five acres? I don't know, you know?
Well, they've got a plot up there, and they've got an easement to it, and so that's...
Maybe I chased a little horse or a rabbit or a little bit, but I'm not for closing the road.
Anyone else like to state their opinion?
I'm not for closing it either.
What about you, Brian?
No.
What about you, David?
If, the way I understand this, if, if the road is closed, cemetery, you cannot close it.
You cannot.
State law requires it to be open for the families or whoever is in the cemetery. But in this situation, the county don't have any control over, from, from down here to bridge beyond.
Yeah, we have 150 foot.
That's one thing.
We have 150.
Beyond that point, we don't have no...
No.
As far as cemetery itself, it's not on the road.
No, no.
So...
No, 'cause up the end of the road, it's another 300 foot, 400 to the cemetery to the field.
How'd you all back there? What did I get out of it?
I was there this morning.
It would be time, it would be hard times, sometimes if it's wet, it'd be pretty arid lane, to be back there, you know, you could get stuck back there.
And I've left it open out there, you know, for respect, you know, y'all, Miss Caton and whoever else to come up there, and I'm not trying to block nobody, like I said, I understand your situation, and I ain't met nobody, ain't gonna be met nobody, you know?
Hey, I understand, I understand the problems you have, with the people that are having another...
It's a daily, no, I can see nobody, and...
The state law is though you can't block.
That's right, you're a factor.
Well, the only thing I say, you know, I'm trying to fight down the road, you know, and I know Jason's probably got good means about it, and of course, y'all are really concerned, and, you know, you don't know if he could sell the land later on down the road, somebody else could get it. And you don't ever know what can conflict, or try to shut these people out, or try to do something, I mean, it could get to be a court case or anything, you know? And as long as we, the county, the people of Warren County's got control of that road, you know, since y'all are really concerned, and I appreciate everybody telling me, you know, I just certainly feel like that we need to leave the road like it is, you know, you know, keep maintaining and improving it and everything, and that way, the man is still in charge of you getting to the point that you've had for years. There's nothing changed about it, you know?
But I would like to have, I wasn't really through, I understand his position too, very much so, but cemetery is, you cannot block them out.
Cause I've got a, I've got a suggestion.
Okay.
I'm sure any of these people that's got family members that's buried up there is not going to be in there after dark. With my, it would, it would be up to me, and it would be okay as chairman, and I'm sure it would with these members, to allow him to shut a gate every night, and open it back during the day.
That's what he does, I mean, what is...
That's what I'm here for.
I'm saying, down at the, down at the bridge, right at the curb. Put your gate up there, every night, shut it, and every morning, open it up.
But who's responsible if someone comes down at nighttime, and runs through the gates and have a wreck crack off in the creek? And I put the gates up, and I don't know who's responsible.
Yeah, and I can't really authorize you to do that, it's against the law, for a county road to be gated.
He can't, but he got a gate that road.
I see now what you're talking about, some thug come through there for the same reason that he's going up there anyway.
And hits the gate.
To be trying out, out road, out...
Now, Gary, your idea would work at the end of the county road, where his property starts, if he wanted to do it.
That's up to him.
But that's what he's trying to keep the real fresh.
I understand, I understand.
Exactly, y'all way up there are definitely...
And it's pretty far enough there, and that's a pretty cemetery. You know, I, when I went up there, I couldn't believe it, it was really nice, the pretty view.
I'd like to say that the Catons have done all of that. They cleaned it up, they planted trees, and we were disappointed, the fence came down. And I would like to ask why the fence can't be put back up?
I went out there Monday, and the horses were out there, knocked the bench over, and you could just see the footprints all over, and I thought, oh my God.
I mean, that's trampling on the graves...
I got three ponies that got out.
Yeah, that's trampling on our, did you find out who took the fence thing?
Well, I answered that, it was an irrigation pivot, it hit the corner of the fence, and it was just a, a cow fence, it wasn't no tree, which is a fence, it's your fence, my fence, but at one corner of it, one of the wheels had went through, on a very far corner, had went through right where it, where it rode to. And I just took the rest of it down. I didn't really mean nothing about it, hear nothing about it, or nothing from no one, so I didn't know it was really a big issue, but...
Now, I would like to request that it be there, because it delegates or delineates the area of sacredness to us, you know, of our families, and, and it, it's not just out in the open, Mrs. Caton and her sons and daughters have done all of that on their own to beautify that, and I think they've done a wonderful job. We, we, I'm, I'm a city girl, I don't have equipment, my husband and I don't have equipment to keep it up. Her family keeps all of it up. We just go out and do a little weeding every now and then, and enjoy the beauty, and, and but she's done a lot to make, to beautify that area. And, but she's done a lot to make, to beautify that area.
I'd like to have a plan of words says how big the cemetery is. You know, wouldn't get that, you know, I'd be glad to put a fence back up or something like it was, you know?
Where could he get a plan?
Well, she said...
I've seen this, my lady in Chattanooga...
Can you get one and give...
I got one and I just found out about the meeting today, this morning, when I called her and I was like, "Anyway." And I've been looking for it. I didn't think I ever needed it.
We can get it. Isn't that registered somewhere with you?
It should be registered.
I think it might be, it might be registered in the county somewhere, I'm not really...
A terrorist office?
Kind of a little different from a road, you know?
Yeah, terrorist office, that might be.
Herschel, would you like to add anything to this?
I think the committee has already spoken.
And if I, you know, I really, you know, I really didn't know about the cemetery on the start. Nobody told me a thing about it, but some of you ladies started calling me. And I really wanted to worry, you know? I mean, I'd been back there, you know, several times, of course, I had big crops out and stuff. And I'm sure it might've been grown up a little at one time and, and I just wanted to worry that there was something back there, you know? Or, you know, we probably had this meeting quicker earlier, you know? And it looks like it's really a good thing the county waited a little longer, you know, because I don't call no burden on my family's cemetery. And you know, and I see Jason's phone too. I mean, you know, I guess, you know, I think the committee made a good decision and the lady, you know, finds like it is and...
I hate for Jason, I really do.
I do too.
Because, you know, I can, I can imagine that some of the problems you have.
Well, it ain't have that much, but it can, you know, someone finds out the wrong one or that's way me out.
You got a bunch of equipment over there and stuff like that.
But I appreciate him wanting to plan and he's going to put the fence back up. That just shows he's a gentleman right there.
I truly appreciate it.
It's true.
Thank you.
Is there plenty of signage up there about no trespassing and, I mean, is there anything like that we could add that would...
I would really want to be us and be up...
I mean, on the county road part, you know, something...
Well, y'all got two dead insines, you know, basically, out there at Baker and one down there at the, at my driveway, so there's nothing else to do.
Well, would someone like to entertain a motion to go ahead and keep the road as it is?
I'll make that motion.
That motion, do I have a second? All in favor of saying aye? Any more new business?